You got anything to add, Lori?
Yes.
It is six o'clock, eight twenty-five to twenty-one. We'll open the council meeting. Do you stand up for what it was?
I'd like to lead this debate in the United States of America, into the Republic of which stands one nation under God and in the world, with the justice of all.
Thank you. Welcome, everybody. I get a motion to approve the agenda.
I'll make a motion.
We got a second?
I have a second.
A motion made in section two, second to approve the agenda. Anyone here to say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's carried. Approve the minutes of August eleventh, twenty twenty-one council meeting.
I move.
I got a motion. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Motion made in section two to approve the minutes of August eleventh. Anyone here to say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's carried. All business.
Well, just one thing, you know, obviously they got the, our project started pretty well, but I just drove by there tonight and I'm a little concerned about the level on that culvert that's right next to the highway. I took Steve up there. And I think, you know, what we, the city agreed to do was pay for a ditch to along number nine there. And I think, and they sent that culvert today, you know, they got all that dirt. I, I told Steve to check it out, because I think that culvert that they got going across the driveway is way too high.
I looked like that to me, too.
You do?
I drove by it with a semi and a crane, and they asked them about it. That's what the reading was for.
Well, if they are there, it just looks way too high, because, because, because do they understand that there's a limited amount of budget we have to? I mean, they got all that dirt piled there right now, which is fine, but we're just supposed to be grading a ditch, not, not doing all their dirt work for them. They put all that dirt in there and it's a little concerning what we're gonna pay for that.
Lot to look, to look at there, because there was a, there was just the pile that when they done the culvert, all.
Oh, no, it's, Steve, you, you.
Steve, please, Steve, Steve, talk about here. Yeah, it looked like they had set it and they started putting the dirt down.
There's probably been more dirt in there. That they just, you know, couldn't strip them yet, but, yeah, I can just have, you know, verify the elevations tomorrow. Just make sure that it's dry.
Yeah, okay, if you would. Please.
Yeah, I was, I was just, I was concerned about that, so I brought, that's why.
I drove by a couple things. Geez, that looks awful high, but I don't know.
I did, I did go to the egg partners and got the easement. So we can go up along that cherry trees and, or crumble tree where they are. They do have to come out. And I talked to egg partners. They're, they're not egg partners anyway, but they, egg partners liked them. I says, well, if we have to, we'll put three more trees back in.
Okay.
That's, that's a cheap one, really. But they, the only thing they specify in there is we put the sewer up through there to leave it all lit for them. They put it up midway there.
Put a light on?
Yeah, and they brought that right away. So if we get all lit, that's, there's no problem. So they've been good to work with and everything else. Something else I could do, I can't remember, Israel.
Well, it seems to be moving along nicely, so that's good.
Yeah, I met, I met with Tony today, and I met with Todd from Sew Markers. And Nikki. Then a trip, that's been going good. Any other old business?
No.
New business? Let's go to you guys. For this, for that variance, variance in the house. You got your papers and everything?
I think we're gonna be, what do we have to be? We're thirty-four feet off the back.
Thirty-five feet is what it is, from your back lot line.
We're, we're at thirty-four feet.
Give you one, five, four, variance, or.
That's what we gave you, too, so it'd match your house. Okay.
In order of thirty-five feet off the house, whatever the front was, again.
Thirty foot?
Thirty feet off the.
No, it's off the, not the curb though, it's off the right of way.
Yeah.
Correct?
Yeah.
Okay.
Looks like this, this one right up here.
Uh, it's actually one seven.
He's Roger Cobista, the next one.
Well, it's good to get, good to see the houses are going up there.
I wonder when we're gonna get on Master Quest.
Well, hopefully it's gonna be soon.
Because like Amazon, it's like, they can't find us and.
Trust me.
It's crazy how.
I exhaled yesterday. When I do go for one state, they said there's nothing there, and so, yeah, they're. Yeah, so you wanna start building right away, that too?
Uh, yeah, I'll be closing the lot on the first and start building.
Starting their afternoon. They sold their house, so they're ready to.
Well, I heard they sold it, yeah, that's good.
Then he wants to do, um, also approve their building permit, the drawing, plus do the setback.
Yep. I wanna do it.
Okay, well, let's, let's have everybody look at it, so we know what we're doing. Okay?
So they don't have to come back again?
Yeah. It's the same house that he put in?
Yeah, same house. He's just doing a little bit different. He's actually with the, the room with the.
Show it to everybody, so we know.
The variance here, believe me, is actually my house as a, no, a fourteen and fourteen deposit. Well, this is, my house is, uh. Right here, he's, he's got a room underneath it, so I didn't have.
Oh, he did bring everything else. He just brought the full.
Yeah, I had this full here. He's got full basement going all the way up to the roof there. Otherwise, pretty much the same.
And they only want one foot side?
Yeah, yeah.
That's the back side.
That's the back side, yeah. Right here.
Yeah, so there's.
The front driveway there. We have thirty-four feet from the bunker lot to the house, so it's one foot.
Can I, can I get a motion to the variance on the building permit?
Yeah, I'll make a motion.
Can I get a second?
I'll send.
Okay, motion made in section two to approve the building. Is it for you, Cobista, or?
Well, it's Scott Minnick.
Scott Minnick?
God, Scott Mecknik. I call him Minnick.
Mecknik.
Mecknik and Kaya.
Yeah.
The address of the property is one oh seven eleven Street.
One thousand seven eleven Street.
No, one oh seven.
One oh seven.
Or one oh seven, yeah.
Yep.
Okay, I got a motion made in section two. Can I, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's carried.
Yeah, so the two, those, and the building permit application, two filled out, and then our new builder.
Yeah.
Okay, and then the liability waiver.
The first, third, third.
Yeah, or you can pull it up online. Yeah, from the.
Okay. Well, thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah. Okay, uh, city council chambers, I did. I talked to Steve after our last meeting down here, and we get a lot of people in here. It gets awful crowded, so we were thinking on doing, Steve is gonna make an office over here, right now?
Yep, yeah, on the other side of the wall.
Right, right on the other side of this wall. And we're gonna move the gas up towards Steve's office is, then we can clear this out and make this a bigger council room, so people come in.
Oh.
I mean, we have to have it a little bigger than what it is.
Yeah.
But that's the easiest way to do it without.
Without having to change everything, yeah. So there's some, take this out?
Take that wall, basically. How does everybody feel about it?
Where would the dollars come from?
Just, well, we got some money coming in right now, so.
From where?
COVID money.
Uh, from American investment plan.
Or Ameri-, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, and you could argue that that's COVID related by arguing that you need a bigger space to accommodate people while maintaining distance. So I think that's a reasonable expense.
So I mean, does it sound like everybody, you know, the same page, so we can do it, if you agree to it?
Yeah, well, that, that's not a, that, even if that's a load bearing wall, they can just put a beam there and put supports on each side when they, when they open it, right?
Yeah, and it's not, it's not even a load bearing.
Oh, it's not, okay. But it might be, but no.
We could open that up, so we can, it's bigger in here.
Yeah, it does get pretty tight in here, there's a bunch of people.
So you guys agreeing with it? Okay.
Yeah.
Good design. I haven't gotten ahold of Jake yet. Can't believe I'm busy right now, I don't have time. I'm not, I'm not. So that's, I'll still get ahold of him, Steve, if you, if you mind me, if you can get ahold of us, please. Twenty twenty-two budget, preliminary budget. You guys sure how this is operated? No, I was looking at it earlier, but I was a little. Okay, the twenty twenty-two, she's got a one percent, a two percent, a three percent, a four percent, a ten percent. We can, this is just, it doesn't have to be tonight anyway, but what it is, is when we approve this budget in September, we can go lower in December, but we cannot go higher, so something will come up. So you always wanna go a little higher than we could either, like last one, the four percent.
Four percent, so here's our, um, four percent is what we caused of the, here's our year-to-date, and then our forecast. There were a couple things, um, that caused us to go over budget, the viola tip came for the street and viola. And we did have some extra training we did in hiring consultants.
Yeah, some, some stuff comes over every year that.
Yeah.
Kind of throw, throw the deal. I mean, this is preliminary budget, what we hope to do, usually comes in higher than what we plan.
So this is where, um, our levy was five hundred forty-seven thousand. We have half of that in. And then, um, here is the amounts for our levy next year. I, I went one through four percent and then jumped to ten, just to give you an idea.
So, Lori, we should explain to the two, two councils, three, three?
Every council.
Everything, yeah, everything.
In past years, if I can say this, Gary, I'm gonna turn to them. In past years, I think what the councils tried to do is keep the, you know, raise the levy a li- somewhat, but because we had growth, um, the, in theory, an individual property tax owners' taxes maybe didn't go up very much at all, because we had growth to offset that. So while you may raise the levy, if we have more property to tax, it doesn't raise the individual owners as much. Isn't that kind of what we've done?
Yeah, we, like, uh, we brought it up, but then we had a business that came in, and the property taxes on that pretty much covered our cost. And this year, we're gonna have another one coming in that's gonna cover our cost. Next year, the ones that are being built, well, the one won't, the one will be two years on, but the other one probably will be next year, if he moves in before November, something, or December.
Well, but we gotta pay him back.
Yeah, that one we gotta pay back, but I mean, we do have money, extra money coming in.
Yeah, it won't be as good as, I mean.
Egg partners, egg partners built on, too.
Yeah, egg, egg partners has been the real kind of driver of that growth over the years. And you gotta remember, we're not, these are great projects, but they're, we're not gonna see the full, the full benefit tax wise for a number of years, because that's what we use to kind of, as our contribution to the project.
And every house built as well.
Every, every.
About spread, split between more property values.
I did see that preliminary, I don't think anybody else saw it, our census figures, it is twelve fifty, that's what our, that's what our official number is. Did anybody else see that? Yeah, it's twelve fifty. I, I looked it up on that.
I mean, it went from twelve, ten, thirteen, twenty, to back to twelve fifty, you know?
I saw it twelve fifty.
But every, every building goes up and everything else is tax based.
So I asked Lori this morning, now, um, Fabtech, they have nine years. What is, was there something put on the senior living?
That, that's a, that's a.
Is that different?
Tax abatement. Um, Fabtech has all, all of their, um, Fabtech has not only the city's portion, but the county and the school district portions, they get, get, get paid back every, every nine years. With the senior living, that's, um, up to seven hundred ninety-five thousand dollars over eleven years. Are the city portion, but it's the coastal district and the, and the county still get their portions out of that. So it's gonna be a while.
For that one, yeah.
For that one, yeah, yeah.
Well.
Yeah.
But there has been, what, how many new houses this year? Already five, already four?
This will be, this will be four, and then there's another one going in, that's gonna be five, we got, we got that, that tunnel, so it's gonna be six. Yeah, good, a lot of help, yeah. So I mean.
And if you wanna come in for some more training, or if you wanna go over it in a little more detail, so come in. I would like more than three times. So, yeah.
You got any, you got any questions, the others?
So we just need to keep in mind that September twenty-second meeting, that the decision.
That's the meeting.
Yeah.
Yep.
September what?
Twenty-second.
Twenty-second. And then I have Steve and I all get together and talk about like sewer, water, any of that, if, if there's any big projects to invest in for, so I'll be bringing you a class study on that as well, and then we usually divide or decide more towards the end of the year, for whenever you say rates in January. So, and it's looking like garbage will be meeting there anyways.
Okay, if you guys don't pay at home, just study a little more, whatever. Any questions, ask Lori.
I, I have a question, kind of, and that, so we're gonna, this lot is selling for. This lot is selling for only thirty-four to thirty-four six, but then we got the twin home lots, that's selling for.
Fifty.
Fifty. I, I think we might wanna consider just paying that to the bank. But just because we haven't really paid off any debt on that, on that, um.
On the new one?
On the new one. I, and.
Well, we should.
The, the thing is that if we do that, if we pay ahead, we still have to come up with bond payment when it's due. So then that comes out the general account.
I know, but I just can't remember if we have paid anything off. Tell me how that works, I guess, I'm not sure. So, so like the goodie bank, they, they won't let you pay anything?
Um, they will, but my point is, we still have to come up with.
You still gotta pay the bond? Oh, yeah.
It's a hundred thousand dollar payment, and if I've just paid them, now I don't have the one hundred thousand when it's time to pay them.
Well, but, but we don't have it anyway, though, that we're gonna, they don't wanna see it just go in a general fund in physical way, and then spend it away.
Well, it won't, it, it gets quoted through the general fund, and it just sits there. It just sits there.
We don't pay anything at, at the way, I don't know.
No. Well, let me go get.
I just, I'm just concerned about.
Yeah, when, when is that due?
Well, it, I think it was set all over five years, but that's what I'm concerned about, is we're gonna have, presumably we're gonna have.
A big mountain.
From, presumably we're gonna have lots, all the lots sold, we're still gonna have debt.
Right.
Don't, don't do that. Do it October or something like.
I'm not really sure. She knows, she knows the thing, I don't know.
October might have something scary there.
Oh, this one home, is that one you wrote?
Yeah.
Okay, so August first, I, I paid seventy-four hundred dollars.
Okay, okay.
Now, February first, thirty-three thousand is due.
And that's principal and interest?
Yep, so even if I pay early, when we get this money, I'd have to turn around, I still gotta make the payment.
So you, so you're saying you'd rather pay, make the payment, you wanna make, well, it's one to do it all.
Okay, here's the one you're talking about. So August, I just paid ninety-six hundred on that one, and then February first, I have to pay ninety-six thousand, so.
And that's on the old, that's once in heights two.
Yeah, that's on, this is where this one's being sold though.
Yeah, yeah. That's where we're gonna be eventually, but.
Yeah.
We have to pay the piper, because we're not gonna, not sales to pay it, pay off then.
I mean, it's just like your checkbook at home, you wouldn't, if you pay early, you still have to make your regular mortgage payment.
Oh, yeah, I know, I just, yeah, yeah, okay.
If you want me to pay early, I will.
No, no, I, I.
But if we did, like you said, we're just paying with the pay.
No, no, I, 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 but if we did, like you said, we're just paying what the payment comes due, then you just pay extra, right? That's what we'd be doing, or?
No, I think we're gonna be a struggle just with the ninety-six thousand.
Oh, we are gonna struggle with that for the ninety-six.
Well.
When's, when's the ninety-six thousand due?
Uh, that's due.
Let's look here, okay, right now, because I, we paid out a hundred and five thousand, we have two thousand three hundred in that account.
Okay, okay.
So. So.
Yeah, I see what you're saying, yeah, I know what you're saying, yeah.
We need to make the sales and leave it there until it builds up again till February.
We need to make, we need to make progress on this, on this bigger one, we're kinda, we're, we're using this, these lot sales to pay this one, but it's all only money. Sometime we're gonna be, you know, we're gonna be, um, we're not gonna have, not have enough lot sales to pay back the.
Right.
The.
Yeah, here is, um.
Well, that, that's why we wouldn't take sales that way.
And then where will the money come from?
Well, we're gonna have to take, well, I have, we have a debt service, debt service column in the, in the, um, don't we, Lori, have someplace on here?
Oh, debt service, um.
There are a hundred and twenty.
Well, that's in, yeah.
Hundred and twenty thousand, yeah.
Okay, so. For twenty twenty-one, a hundred and twenty-eight thousand eight hundred and six.
And that would be.
Yeah.
That would be all these, all these numbers, we got these three payments, so we got the Swanson Heights third, or second, Swanson Heights third, and then the water and sewer, right? And then, so you gotta.
We gotta get the budget.
Yeah, yeah. So, I just, I just, oh, we should be okay, there, there's gonna be a period of time.
Well, and this schedule, this is in your practice as well, or, um, I emailed it to you, and give you, uh, right where we are today, or twenty-fourth. So you can see what we've received for the year and what we've dispersed.
Sure.
Um, and then where we are at the end there, so.
So, and this is a toll, I mean, this a toll that he.
That's what we're.
Debt service.
Yep.
And then we don't, I want, we have the street debt out there, there's.
This is everything we own, right here.
That's it?
Yep.
All right, well, we should, we should each have a copy of that, so.
Okay.
I mean, that, maybe, don't you think you guys would like to have that?
Yeah, yeah, I'll pull it in.
I'd be nice to see it, so we don't want anything else on the street, we don't need all the streets or nothing like that?
Yeah, it's in here.
Two streets in there.
Oh, 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 that's on that deal, move on, there you go, I forgot, I'm, I'm, I'm.
Yeah, so it's this one right here, this two thousand twenty-one deal.
And then two streets, the water tower and all that stuff, yeah.
Yep.
And the water tower part of that, on, part of that debt service is paid for, from the. Water.
Cool, water, and the two.
Yeah, okay.
So nothing from sewer.
And then Verizon.
Well, Verizon goes into the water fund, just the.
All right, okay, very thanks. If you'd like to help, that's good, okay, thank you.
Okay, public comment?
I got one thing you could add in there.
Okay.
Um, I spoke with a gentleman that works for a company that might be purchasing the countryside manor.
And we're gonna sell again?
Yep, and he was inquiring if they, they're gonna fix the road on that back half, and then if they fix it, basically, they wanna give it to us, and then it's gonna be power street from there on out. If we, he wants to know if we're open to that, and then if so, do we want them, basically, we want them to build that street according to our specs and not theirs? And I said, more than likely, yes.
Oh, yeah.
But I wanna make sure before I go farther with him that, that is something we're open to. I mean, if they will build that street to our specs, then, I mean, if they just wanna give it to us, then it's ours.
Yeah, see, that's, that was before, we, we talked about that before, saying that we aren't gonna build it, but if they build it, because of the way the lots are set up, it's not set up as a court, they're set up as individual lots, so if he builds that, and builds it in the city, I said, we can't help taking hold.
What's on their means, or anything?
That's what I was wondering, what's, what is involved there?
I, I think if there's, there's not much for drainage, or if, if you won't do it, I would highly, I mean, I would, yeah, I want that, I mean, I want.
It does.
Drive over curve.
Yeah, yeah.
In there just to direct that water flow to where it needs to go, because that's kind of a big issue.
So I'm gonna go north.
Yeah, and I just don't think there's much for base underneath it, so I think, I think it's gonna be a very project to look at, I think, but.
What about snow removal, where are you gonna go with that, are you just gonna wing it all the way around and put it somewhere else, or?
That's what we do, we just follow, just like we do a normal street, we haven't followed the back section that's theirs.
Look, we used to do that, but then we had a conflict in there, so we said, you do it. But if you look, then, then they're actually individual lots, so it's not a trailer court.
Yep, yeah, 'cause it is, it's all, yeah.
Yeah, so that, actually, we pass them on individual lots there, so, I don't have an issue, if they build that street, they will.
Yeah, as long as there's not any involved or anything.
So right here is where it ends, and then they own this.
Yeah, yeah, up at the top there, yeah.
It'd be a lot easier for Steve and Lincoln when they're following the road, going all the way around again.
Yeah.
So they wanna fix.
They want surface, the east side of it, the west side is done.
Look at the point there.
Starting right here, the trailer park owns the road, it's like considered a driveway, right, and then the city owns this.
Yeah.
Um, so we just take care of it up to that point.
Okay, and they wanna fix.
Yeah, it's pretty rough for this, it's all our whole term.
And I think there's some kind of a half, half looking.
Well, they, actually, there's, actually, we put the storm sort of through there.
Oh, yeah.
There's, there's some storm in there, and there's some half.
You used to have that half pipe in there.
That's still there.
Okay. But we took the storm sort down because of behind it to where the water went.
Yeah, I remember that now, yeah, yeah.
So how does the council feel about that, if they do the street, will we take it over?
So then they have to do it according to what we want.
It would have to be, I think.
It'd have to be engineered.
And have they engineered and have, up, so they have to put so much base in there, because of theory, we don't want, we don't wanna take a road that's a piece of crap, and then we gotta.
Gotta fix it.
We gotta fix it again anyway, you know? And, so I, I don't know what customer, what do they do, what, uh, what, what, do we have a policy carry, when, when we do?
This is the first that's come up.
Yeah, but.
Then what happens, like, with the right of way on the road in relationship to the trailers that are there, how close are they?
That, that, that's gonna be a problem too, because.
But there's, there's already a road set through there.
But.
But.
Now, but if you do repairs and snow and everything, we're gonna have to.
Yeah.
Have a little, maybe a little bit more.
Cause there, some of those are really close to that road.
Yes, they are, yeah. But some of, some of, on the other half, some of the roads way out because of the rust.
Yeah, right, you know, they go way in next to the trailer, because that's the only way you can get it all.
Yep. So people think, oh, that's the road, but it's not, you can get a, like a fire truck and everything in it. I think it was, I still think it was a forty-five or a fifty-five railway, or street through there for them guys.
I'm not.
That's what we'd have to find out first.
Yeah.
Right, to make sure it'd be wide enough, 'cause we have had fire trucks, I mean, we did have a fire, uh, trailer house by recent, it was down there, we were in there one night, it seemed like we had enough room to get up to the house.
Yeah, all the utilities coming from the back.
From the north side, or what do you mean the back?
See the Al's house and the trailers there?
Oh, okay, up there, okay, sure.
So there is no utilities underneath them streets, except for the storm sort that goes through there. So why don't you see what the right of way will be?
Yep.
You gonna tell them that we want it by a hundred years?
Yep.
Maybe they won't do it, I don't know.
Okay, yeah, I will check on that.
So why would they offer? Why would they offer?
Well, they, we, we, we used to take care of them. And then they found out it wasn't our street, and we said, we're not doing that, we'd have to do it for everybody's driveway and everything else, and we said, no. So now they want us to do it, but if they give it to us as a built street, that's not costing the city anything, except to follow in the winter time already, just a little bit of ants. And it's actually, if we do do it that way, it's a lot easier for the snow plow, because now they gotta go down so far, turn around, and come back. You know, they could do the whole thing like they used to do.
Oh. Yeah, I guess it would be a good deal if, if it meets specs, I mean, if it's, it's wide enough and.
Well, yeah, it, it'd have to be, be our engineer specs.
Right. Ah.
So are there fire hydrants on that driveway, are they on the other side of the manor?
I believe there's some along there.
There's a few in there.
There's a few in there?
Yep.
Probably all, all these old trailers, there's one near that, so.
Yep, one by our, and then one on the back corner by the scanner.
Sure.
Well, that's right, that's what's standing, so.
There's four back there.
Well, see what they'll do there.
Okay, yeah, I'll check, and we'll be back at.
Okay. Then we'll go into manor, 'cause there, there are a couple there. I'm glad you're here tonight, because one of them is the old fire hall in the city, Old City Hall. I went down there yesterday, and old fire hall was over an inch of water, you know, coming out of the walls from city, Old City Hall. So, I talked to them, and if we take them beams off, just cut it off, then we could patch that wall there. You know, get rid of that, and then we have to take the cement off, and bring everything else, or drain out to the front. But right now, it's sitting here kind of like this.
Yep, and everything drains to the back.
Yep, and that's where all the water is coming in. And she was raining in there pre-harbor, I was in there yesterday, I thought it was outside. So, but we have to do something that just, it's gonna wreck their building. I mean, well, we have to take it down, then we can get rid of it, then it'll go back on the tack poles.
Sure.
Is that building used for now?
Nothing. There's no electricity in it either, 'cause I turned around, had to use my flashlight to go in.
Is it still rough, isn't it still rough up there?
Yeah, there's a tin roof.
Flat roof in there, no.
Flat one.
I thought it was torn out?
No, they tore the, the pane went off, because it went into the fire hall. So we got rid of that, now the flat roof's making it worse.
And there's a well there still, is that a abandoned well?
Well, the well's capped.
Okay.
The only, the only other pipe that's in there that I look at is the, the water line going in that we cut off the cap.
Yep.
Were that, there's a, there's a, been a big, it's pretty sizable.
About like this big, around a mile. But that's been capped, then there's an eight-inch, I think it is, is it a bolt that goes down in and down there, or through all the valves?
Uh, four-inch.
Is that four-inch, we often looked into that yesterday, but it's, I can't tell.
Yep.
So we just have to cap that off and pull the cement out of there, get it drained the right way, 'cause we can't be having it going in somebody else's building from us. So I think I'm looking for approval to get rid of the building.
So you wanna completely tear it down?
I mean, it's a trap, right now, so, and it's, it's bad, right here, yeah.
So once it was demolished and taken down, what possibly could it be used for?
We could sell that, and have somebody put an addition on to its building.
And who has the other buildings down there?
Well, they, first, yeah, one.
There?
No.
No. No.
There's on the other side.
Jason.
Or you?
My brother and I logged up building right now. She was the one that got a little carried yesterday.
So you complained?
No, my brother was. He got a hold of me last night, and said I had, got a hold of a bear and brought it down to that building, and said it watered bad, and, and. So I'm, I'm looking for permission to get rid of that building, and we could sell the land. 'Cause right now, it's, it's doing absolutely nothing but harm.
Right, and it's gonna cost us money if it does damage to your building.
We, we, this is historical, there also, there used to be a roof on there, all the water went on there, that, they did fix that, right?
Well, when the city, and they owned both buildings, it was no problem.
Yeah.
But then when that building got sold, it was going out, so all of a sudden, they didn't want that water from the city, got out of the building, so we took the roof off.
Yeah.
And then that's when we, well, we took the roof off after we built this one.
When it had a slanted roof on there before.
Yep.
Right.
That's, so you took the slanted roof off, but there's still a flat roof there. Okay, that's, I thought you took all, but you didn't, I see. Well, so there's no gravel or rubber or nothing on that, that's just a metal roof now, metals, oh, okay, I didn't have a look up there, but.
Yeah, you looked, there's trees growing in it, so.
Yeah, well, I, I went inside the building one day, I looked in there, and it's, I think something needs to be done with it, for sure.
So I'm, I'm looking for, uh, motion, just to be able to get a little bit.
That's new, yeah.
You made motion? So, can I get a second?
Oh, second, 'cause you can.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, I think, uh, I stand.
That, that, you have to understand.
Motion's made second, you get rid of that old city hall, I'll figure to say aye.
Aye.
Close? No, you can't oppose.
Oh, yeah.
Motion's carried.
So if anybody asks, it's safety.
Oh, definitely. Okay, the next thing on there is a squad car. We have it in the budget, maybe five years, and we replace the squad car. Josh, uh, yeah, Josh, he's got a squad car that we can pick up now for twenty thousand, I think, isn't it? Oh, yeah, you guys are too young.
Too young?
No, it's, he's got it, he's got it already bid out, so we can pick the squad car up, and then we have to turn around and put the equipment in it. And it's supposed to be replaced next year for sure, but we can get it cheaper if we do it now. And they, they, the squad cars are hard to come by, you turn around, they do it out of this one here, and it's on a state bid.
Maybe I should explain to them what the state bid means here, so they understand.
Okay, the state bid, it comes in.
The state has a contract with every.
Yeah, they have a contract for, instead of us going through a dealer, we can go through a dealer, but the dealer takes it from the state contract, and we pick it up for that price instead of his price. And that's everybody in the state, the counties, state highway patrols, the sheriff department, the other, all, all municipalities, and that's how we bought this one that we have, this, not, uh, in trip, what is it called?
Explorer.
Huh?
Explorer.
Yeah, the squad, or the, yeah, whatever, the Ford.
I just fired it.
Explorer, but I thought it was something else, the air seater or something.
Yeah, the air seater, there, it all just has a package.
Yeah, it's a pa, it's a police package on it. And then it has, it would have to go to Rochester, you get the computer stand and the lights, and radio and all that in, and we'd have to buy that, but we have money to do that with this COVID line we got in, because it's a safety deal, just like this here.
We also have, um, I have a $5,000 penalty, so we have 25,000 in it.
Okay, twenty-five to twenty, and the car's gonna be twenty, so.
So that would cover all the rest of it then.
Well, not quite, and the other one is gonna be, the whole package, I think Josh told me, is about forty grand when we get done.
Okay, then what do we, are we getting rid of one then, or we gonna trade one of the others?
We're gonna, we're gonna get rid of the Crown Vic that's down there by the sewer pipe right there.
What, is any idea what it's worth, or?
Last one, we only got about four hundred dollars worth of.
And what kind are they gonna buy, is it another squad? Yeah, well, yeah, it is gonna be an SUV, then, not a car.
Same thing with that, yeah, yeah.
So how many working squads do we have right now, two, three?
Yeah, we're getting rid of the one.
So we still have three?
Yep. And I thought when we first started, I just thought three would be way too much, and then you get going, breakdowns and that, and then three, we lucky to have four, but, you know, three's, three a word.
Right. So it was supposed, it was supposed to take care of next year instead of this year?
Well, yeah, we, we transfer money into it every year, so every five years, we get rid of one and get another one. That's how it goes, so we don't run it into the ground and all of a sudden, we're forty thousand dollars short, you know?
Yep, absolutely.
So. But the Crown Vic we bought used from, actually, we didn't buy it, we donated to the city from.
Treasure.
Treasure Island.
Oh, wow.
So, and that didn't really cost us anything. Damn pal, we bought. Damn town we bought in two thousand eleven, or I think it was two thousand twelve, maybe quarter of eleven.
How long will it take to get this car?
The car will be here right away, but the, it's probably going to be six months to eight months to get the package in it.
So then we, it'll validate next year then?
Yeah, so that's why if we do it now to get it.
Right.
Well, if we have an opportunity to get a new deal, it's going to make sense to get it. So. Looking for a motion there too, or one way or the other?
So just so I understand, um, so we do this, the city does this every five years, looking to risk, just to replenish. And so in another five years, and then does that money come from the general fund that you just put in over that for five times, five years? Okay. But with this one, there'll be some of that COVID money that could use for packaging it out?
The other payment we thought we would get next year. So whatever we're not using on this project, you would have, plus we are supposed to get another sixty-two thousand next year.
Next year? In twenty-two?
Yes.
Did we get money just recently again?
We just got the sixty-two thousand.
No, we got another sixty-two?
Right, in twenty-two as well.
So maybe the money's there where we don't have to scratch our heads for it, right?
And that COVID money is pretty specific on, there's only certain things that we can use it on, right?
If we justify it.
It, right.
As a COVID.
Thank you.
Safety motto, so. Josh had a case that presented, he presented a lot of items. He's got all the stuff there. I get the gist of what he needed, so.
What, what was it previous to this? Josh gave me that was a different squad, like a city squad or a local squad?
The last one we bought?
No, this one he's looking at right now for twenty grand. Where did it come from? Where was it used?
Yeah, it was brand new.
Oh, it's brand new.
I could get it for twenty grand. Because that's through the state deal. I mean, it was like twenty-two thousand. You know, for explorers, like.
Yeah, forty, forty miles, right, Jason? I thought it had like a bunch of miles and stuff along with it.
I thought it was used to one of your first time, but.
No, it's, it's a decent price on it, that's why.
By far. We got a chance to get something that's new for that right now. We almost got to jump on that.
Because it's going to be over forty-two thousand, I think it is, when it's done with all set up.
Right.
So do they have to import a lot of, um, parts and stuff to be able to set it up so it could be used as a cop car?
Well, they, they come, they got so many packages for cars for this. And the package's got like two radiators and batteries and all this. It's heavy duty, you know, Ford. And then when the, for the radio, the computer and.
Lights?
Lights and everything else, we take that down to Rochester. There's a place down there that does all the squad cars for everybody. And then they do, and then that's where, it's actually more expensive to have that than it is the car. You know, but you've got to keep updating everything on that too. That's the worst part of it.
But I just wondered, I mean, are some of those parts, do they have to import them, or are they all made in the United States?
I, I, I can't.
Because there could be a wait because of that. You said sixty-eight months it might take?
Yeah, we can get it set up because they're, it'll go in line down there.
Okay.
See, so if they're doing other ones, then they just put this in the line, so when they get done, then it could be a month, you know? I think that, I think that's a two seventeen that's in there. Isn't that your, one thousand, two seventeen? I know what it is. And, uh.
What does that mean?
Two thousand seventeen.
It's a tall.
That could be, it was an eighteen, one seventeen, there you go there. And we picked that up like in February, and we got it back like first of June or July. But that went down there, then they decal and everything else too, so. So how do you feel?
Well, that's what the money has been spearheaded for.
Right, I mean, it's already in budgeted, and there's a ramp line coming in from the COVID. I see, you're almost at the goal for it.
Okay, you going to make a motion?
I'll make a motion.
You have a second, Terry?
Sure.
Motion, second Terry, purchase squad car, I'm prepared to say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's carried. Then the other thing is, are we sending out letters yet for property? Are we sending letters out for property? For messy property?
Oh. No.
I have to start going because they, down here, we get that. I got a call on that, so.
Why don't we carry you and I after we do our tour tonight? Why don't we do a little tour and see where the problem properties are and
get letters.
potentially get some letters up. Do that?
Let it solve it if we do that? Okay. That's all I have. We have council concerns.
We've talked about, or have talked about this before, about putting or sending letters. Is that really the best way to go? I think, um, Josh had said that he had done that a lot, to go to people's homes to try to.
I know he, he sent the letters, but he's also left to a couple of people. And give them an offer, maybe, and then give them a deadline to do it. And then after that, then they did. They know the city's looking at it. I mean, and I, I get emails from the mayor's association every day. And one of them, I asked about it, that's what they do. They put, but they had it worded something neat because they go, your beauty on your lawn isn't, somebody else's doesn't think it's beautiful or something like that, and also. It's just a good, easy way of putting it to clean up or else the city will come in and build.
Problem is the front yard parking again though, too. When people have all that stuff, you know, they're not supposed to use their front yard for a, uh, storage space.
What about a side yard?
Well, that's, well, we're still working on some of that, but the front yard, definitely, you're not supposed to park there or be in there. I'm not sure, I haven't been down that direction for a long time, but that's really where we, it's important to, I think. Because they just can't, they're not supposed to do that. But there could be, if they, if they have extraneous material on the side yard, that's not, that's considered like an abandoned vehicle or something like that, that's, that's, I won't call it junk, because that's not junk, but miscellaneous material, that, just because it's on the side, that doesn't get them off the hook, I don't.
So you look around and, and.
Identify it.
And, yeah, find out the address of, of who they are, and this would be for, um, companies too, not just.
Or even commercial, commercial property?
Commercial, yeah.
I think we got to.
We got, we got to hear what you're saying.
They're square across the board.
I mean, if you guys see something, you know, you know, just tell Lawrence, we got it done. That's the biggest thing. You have other council concerns? I get a motion to pay the bills. Motion's been made, I have a second.
I'll second.
Motion's made second, pay the bills, I'm prepared to say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's carried. I get a motion during the council meeting.
I move. I'll second.
Motion made second during the council meeting, I'm prepared to say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's carried. Now we'll open up the EDA meeting. I get a motion approved at the gym, called approved at minutes, Y twenty-eight meeting.
Are they in here?
Yeah.
Oh, here it is, it's in the back.
I checked these. That was what they ordered on.
I'm looking at that.
Yeah, they're right in there.
They're after there.
They're after Bill?
Yep.
They're in order.
Yeah. I'll make a motion.
I got a second?
Second.
Motion made second, approved minutes, the, the Y twenty-three, I'm prepared to say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Other business.
I was going to say we're going to close on that, Mr. McNings lot here. That's scheduled for, uh, September first in the twin home lot. I don't know if that, if that.
It's, it's between people.
Yeah, yeah, they'll.
It's what yesterday, right?
This is where we're at.
Oh, okay, you don't.
Um, the mailer was overminded, and we'll be here by ten AM. Terry and I need to sign it, and then I'm driving into Kibbe County, and I've already checked with, um, that department. And Alan Longmire will meet me to take it.
Okay.
But they said it's gone until Monday, so.
All right, so then we, then we can get the other one closed through that twin home.
Plus I signed, uh, to, uh, purchase a brand of another one, so two.
We did, okay.
Another lot?
Yep.
Oh, that wasn't that, yeah, I know what you're talking about.
Yeah, so I mean, it's going, so.
On the same side going down?
No, this is up there.
So that says number two.
Oh, okay.
Right?
Yeah. And that's, um, I'm doing it. Terry, then, that's it?
Yep, that's all I have. Thank you.
Nick? You're it off.
All right, that's good. So, uh, at the last meeting, we kind of went over some of the things that wanted me to cover and a couple of things such as the career fair, community gardens, uh, and the welcome signs. Uh, so the career fair, I did reach out to school. Last year they had some plans in the work department, Red Wing High School, to kind of do a career fair. It fell through because of COVID. Um, I am going to be possibly working with them. She said that we'll touch base a little bit more when school actually, uh, when school begins and all the administration and everybody in the office that can actually help set those things up. Um, so we'll see what I can, what I can do to help them out, uh, move that forward. Um, community gardens, so this, I, I did reach out to the University of Minnesota Extension. And kind of what I got back is every city kind of does their own thing. Um, so if it is something you want to pursue, I think it's going to be one, we have to find some city-owned land unless we can find a resident here in town that's willing, that has a large plot of land that you're willing to donate for this project. Um, other than that, we would have to find some city-owned property. And I did put in kind of the, the rules and regulations that Rochester has in this packet, which is in. Um, different things like that. They, well, Rochester charges, they charge thirty dollars a year for a twenty-by-thirty site. So if we want to do similar size or have that size, like a ten-by-fifteen lot, something like that, try and gauge how many people actually want to use it, and then figure out how much land they would really need to set aside for it. Um, the welcome signs. Uh, for that, I, I searched in grants, I reached out to, uh, my city colleagues. Uh, my city colleagues have not had luck finding grants to actually cover those signs, but they rely more on our community foundations budgeting for it, or giving donations from residents and businesses in town. Outside of Smith's Paint the Town grant, um, which all they're really donating at that point is paint. Um, there, there's not much for grant opportunities or something like that. And I will continue looking, but. Any questions there?
Oh, wasn't there people that were going to donate? The, the businesses weren't, like, three businesses going to donate the signs or something? Thought that was kind of like, it was the city, and the Y, and the J, C. Oh, that's, okay.
So that, that will still happen with the signs?
Yeah. That's why I said I haven't talked to Greg yet about that, but I will. He had, what, two years ago, three years ago, we started this.
Two thousand fourteen.
Been that long? We started, we had a design, everything else picked out. And then the J C didn't have money that year or something, so they were on the way to here, so it was a little late a year. And then we got two years, three years. Now all these signs we have, like up on number nine, is totally gone. The one out here is totally gone. You know, so we got to do something with it, so. The only problem is because it's steel right now, because there's going to be a steel sign. I don't know if we have any pictures, but we want to do that.
Yeah, I had.
You know, it was cut, it was cut out of steel and it's hard, hardboarded. Welcome to Goody or something, something like that, football sign up there is. That's how it was going to be, and then we're going to put posts. I don't think the posts would decide how we're going to put it on. But yeah, if we're going to do one in here, it's what originally started out at. Yeah, I don't see where they're finding the copy. We can, Lawrence can email, or I know there's one around somewhere. Sorry?
No, no, you're fine. Good conversation. Uh, last things I did want to say was Crescent Heights Park, I just got an email back from DNR today. I haven't had time to follow up with that about whether or not that park would have to be ADA compliant. Um, so kind of what they had hinted at was if we have other facilities that are ADA compliant, that facility may not need to be. And being that we do have this area over here, we may be able to do something up there as long as it's not funded by a grant that specifically requires it to be ADA compliant, to do something up there without having to worry about that. I, again, I haven't had time to follow up to make sure everything, anything that we would do would have to be or not be ADA compliant, but that's kind of what they were hinting at there. Outside of that, I think that's all I had to follow up with at this time. Does anyone have any questions for me?
You were pointing at it weirdly, the site. They put up the, that's going to be.
I have not heard from Terry about that.
We want to run the sort of society. Going on my sort of society property?
Yes.
They did decide that?
Well, I was, I thought it was.
Yeah, I haven't heard nothing. I was kind of wondering, because we were talking all year, but now we're going on that, so we're talking Crescent Park and then we're talking Central Park up here, that, I think it was here.
Yeah, I was informed of that. I, I had phished him, that sort of society, to see if they'd be willing to do it, seem like good locations. They wanted a spot close to the highway to draw people in, and I, I thought that would have been a good idea, so if that's what they're doing, that's great.
Okay, yeah. I was, I was just wondering, so. Any more?
I don't think I have anything else.
It's, um, and I don't know the, the name of this. What, what's the, the special type of play, playground that, that maybe Red Wing has one, I don't know.
Yeah, so I, I did some checking. I couldn't find anything in Red Wing except for that. It's a nature exploration park. Um, it's basically doing things that don't require you to purchase a fifty thousand dollar playground set. So again, some of those trees would have to come down, so if you're able to repurpose those, uh, you know, cut different sized logs, like kids can jump on one and the next, different things like that. There's some pictures that you can find on Pinterest or whatever, and it has some, uh, cool different designs that I've looked at. Yeah, so there's some options there. Again, I think it's more of trying to figure out how much it costs and where the grant money is. It'll be a process, and if anything gets done, I wouldn't expect it until next year. It'll be a process, and if anything gets done, I wouldn't expect it until next year.
Okay. Well, thank you.
Yeah.
So, I get a motion during the EDA.
I like the motion.
Motion made second, I adjourn the EDA, I'll hear it, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's carried. I'm not adjourned.